Call the order, the Monmouth City Council for Tuesday, February 3rd. Roll call.
Counselor Carey is excused. Counselor Guthrie?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Milligan?
Here.
Counselor Schaefer?
Here.
Counselor Sobernagle, Mayor Protem Sobernagle?
Here.
And Mayor Oberst is excused.
Okay, all rides for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got two minutes on our consent calendar for the city council for January 20th and our work session on January 20th. Are there any additions or corrections to those? And if not, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thanks. Okay, reports, mayor's report. So I did get a couple of things from Mayor Oberst. So Scott, Mayor Oberst attended the opening meeting of the Street Fund Task Force, and I understand it went well. Good group. He said learned about a number of issues and approaches that others have taken, and I'll let you add anything you'd like, Scott, or you can do it during your report, either one.
Yeah, I can just add now, I mean, it's a good group, they're motivated, they're actually interesting, some of them are kind of like going, can we get past this background stuff and get right down? They really do. But good, yeah, we will meet for a few weeks with some conflicts, but then we're going to attempt to really go twice a month so we can kind of get through this one a little bit quicker.
Excellent. Thanks. You say it'd be a couple of months before you meet then?
Oh, no, it'll be, it'll be a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks, okay, five, six months, that was incorrect.
Excellent.
Then, I think I said, then we go twice a month if we can get that contract out.
And public can attend those meetings?
Absolutely, that's what we mean. You have to make it up the stairs at City Hall.
Very good. Thanks, Scott. Let's see, he also said that WIMPAC is edging closer to the server purchase, and Marilyn Morton is now the chair of that board. She's working with her city manager to iron out the last details. He also said they needed a couple of volunteers for that board, and they're beginning to work towards an independent 501(c)(3). We also had an initial budget committee meeting, which we were all in attendance, I believe, at, I think everybody made it anyhow, and as well as the budget committee, the rest of the folks there. That was on January 27th, it's the last Tuesday. On the 28th, some of us were able to attend the Mid Lamont Valley Council of Governments annual meeting, so I think there was four of us that were represented there. As far as items, there is one item that the mayor has recommended, and that's the art, an appointment to the Arts and Cultural Commission of Travis Mabeson. And I know Travis from being a student body president at Western in the past, so his recommendation is for, that we approve that, so if someone would be interested or willing to.
Make a move.
And second?
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded that we appoint Travis Mabeson as part of the Arts and Cultural Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries there, thanks.
Does that fill that board?
I believe they're one shy yet.
One shy, okay.
And that's the reason, I believe, he picked that board, there were several options there, and that was one, and we were too shy on, so now we'll just be one. Okay, and that concludes the mayor's report. Moving on to council representatives to boards and commissions. First one is senior advisory board, and I can take that one. If I find my notes here anyhow, real quick. Where did I bury them? So a couple of things I'd mentioned there. So we met on January 27th of last week. The center will be closed Presidents' Day, February 16th. There is free tax aid through AARP on Mondays and Thursdays. They've got a series of classes that are now going on consistently. They've got Windows 8's meeting on Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. They've got Mandarin Chinese, which is a conversational language they're trying to work on there, that's at Wednesdays at 1:00 p.m. And they're also got stress management classes on Wednesdays at 3:00 p.m. This coming Saturday, the February 7th, we've got community breakfast at the Senior Center from 8:30 to 10:30. They're working on getting a college work-study program student to support their Walk With Ease program, and I've seen paperwork on that, so that's in the works. And then, a couple of other programs, so they've got some travel stuff that they're wanting to do. So they've got an antique week that's coming up, that they would do a trip over to Lincoln City, and they'd be doing two different tours there, one north and one south. That particular one's scheduled for February 10th. They're headed to Blue Goat Restaurant in Amity on February 19th, and then to the Brigadines for Chocolates. And they're also planning May 5th, they're planning a Cottage Grove trip to Cover Bridge, it's down in that area. So lots of things going on with the Senior Center. Oh, another one, one more. So Rob Whinningham, who's a professor at Western, on March 10th from noon to 2, which he runs gerontology program over there. And they're going to meet in the volunteer hall for this particular one, instead of the Senior Center, they're going to do a cognitive stimulation program for two hours, so.
What does that program he runs?
He runs the gerontology program at Western.
And psychology.
And, yeah, he's part of psychology as well. Okay, and that concludes my Senior Center report. Let's see, Counselor Milligan? Arts and Culture Commission?
Yes, the Arts and Culture Commission met this past Thursday night. There's two items that they're working on. One is the Art Survey, and that's up and operational, it's a survey monkey. It's on the community notes on the back page, you'll see the Art Survey, and it lists the web address there. Also, if you don't want to type that in, you can go to the city's website, look on the right-hand side for community notes link, and it takes you to community notes, and then you can just click on that link and it takes you to the survey. Survey takes about two minutes to take, it's about, I think it's six questions, it's real simple. And, yeah, real simple, real easy. And, so, go take that, so we can get informed about what's, what your interests are. And then the other is a arts calendar, and the plan is to have that up and operational at the first of March. That will encompass three different areas, art, music, and theater and dance, so any activities throughout Monmouth, some that'll, gonna maybe cross over in Independence will be on that. Central School District activities will be on there as well. So anytime you need to find out what are going on in those areas, or if you're not familiar with what's going on in those areas, you can go to the calendar and look and see some of the things that you might not even know is going on in the community, or things that you might have an interest in, but you don't know that they're going on, so it's a way to keep track of that.
Do you know if that will be a Google shareable doc, so we could add that to our calendars by chance, or do you know?
I haven't had that. We're still to figure how to even make it all work.
We're just trying to make sure we have all the initial information, and then, yeah, so we don't know, you know, it could be that it's in PDF format, it could be that it's in some other format that's searchable. It's going to be fairly simple format, whatever we do to start with, it's not going to be real complex.
I'm going to use Google Docs, that's what we need to remember.
Yeah. And that's, that's it. And the focus of the Arts and Culture Commission right now, because it had so few members, and there's been kind of a question of what are we really supposed to be doing? The focus is going to be on the arts calendar, so that we can really get that in place, that they can get that in place, and then from there, expand back out. So it's kind of a regrouping with some focus for this commission.
Thanks, Steve. Counselor Johnson?
I couldn't attend because there was a hearing.
Okay, very good reason. Any community announcements? Hearing none. City manager's report, Scott?
Yep, thanks. First one, I'd like to call your attention to the hearing report. I wanted to point out a few items on there. Lot of activity, and I can say just my perspective, just the town size that I've worked in, this is a lot more than I used to do in other places, and even some ones that are bigger, I think this would be a pretty good list of things going on. Building Department, wanted to note the multifamily construction, four to eight units, but we have 20 in the hopper right now, so there's definitely units coming online, there's a lot of activity. And Community Development, we've got the grant funding for the walking tour, and then we had the Main Street amphitheater design, which is getting real close to getting the final design, and then by the numbers of cash beds, we'll get that back to you very soon. Keep going to the next page. We're coordinating the Dallas Chamber of Commerce for the Monmouth Family Market, so we had a, you know, farmer's market back in Monmouth for the first time in a while. And then had the off-leash dog park installed at Main Street, or, I'm sorry, Monmouth Reparational Park. And then under the police, the big one there, obviously, is the Design and Construction of Police Station, which is, which is popping on really well right now. Municipal Court, we got the video arraignment system set up, that's been a great, great savings for everybody involved. The Everbridge Community Notification System, we need to keep working on getting more people on that, the whole point is so we can get information out, but we need people to be standing up. And then, unfortunately, we did have a homicide that actually occurred in, in Monmouth, and that was great with the Polk County Major Crimes Team, but that is, it's actually multi-jurisdictional, so a team gets together and actually works on that, so it's, when it happened, it didn't become just a Monmouth issue, we had a lot of support on that, and that got processed very well. Keep going, the Senior Center, first two, interesting note on there is that with a lot of volunteer power, but then with the employment resources Northwest and the Eastern Seals, you know, we're getting, you know, we're getting hours, that really keeps the center going, you know, it keeps people there, and it keeps things going in addition to the volunteers. If you notice, a little ways down there, there, it used to be that it had a lot of just storage on the stage, because there just wasn't really any place to put it. Some of it's got cleaned up, and some of it, they just put up a nice curtain, so now when there is a performance or a function, you get something a little more attractive looking, so that was an easy fix, and I think a lot of value there. And then the expansion project down at the bottom, like I said, you guys know we have two-thirds of the funding, and we have all the grants in the hopper on that one. So the next page, the first two ones are really key, our energy conservation efforts are top-notch. We ran into other utilities around the state that are a lot bigger than us that don't do this much, that they're constantly going, really, you guys do that? And you guys put your own money into it? And they're kind of shocked, so a lot of energy conservation efforts there, we had a, you know, the residential.
We've seen that from the LEDs, and is there anything else that's meaning substantially that we're saving?
Oh, yeah, well, the first section deals with more of the residential side, where we go into homes, and that's all you're going to be saving, so windows, heating systems, appliances, there's a whole lot of things we can do in that area. And I think the fun part is the 23 homes, we actually diverted 23 homes with that, that work. And then if you go down to the LED project, which they're definitely making some nice progress on that, that's another 10 homes. And what Chuck likes to mention too is on that, is that you're also, these are longer-lasting lights, so it's cutting down staff time to be replacing, and then because you don't have to replace them as much, you don't have to keep as much inventory, so it lowers costs, you know, kind of down the chain on that one. Then if you go to finance, Casell, got the new, new one there, and we did the first, first shot in the mock conversion this, this last week, and everything went really well. It was pretty amazing what it was taking, we had people here from, you know, 8 o'clock in the morning till midnight a couple nights, and then Saturday to make sure everything went across right, but I think it's in pretty good shape, it's being analyzed by Casell right now, but I think we should be in really good shape for the final conversion, that should go smooth. Then the municipal court, they had their software conversion, then the interesting, challenging part there is it has a system, then you have to blast it into a different cash-receiving system, which is the VADAM, and so they've been working through that, but obviously when we get Casell lined up, and that'll all be integrated, and that'll be pretty flawless. Next page over, administration, we updated the transportation system development charge, and we initiated the community engagement project, which you'll be meeting here at 8 o'clock on Saturday, so you remember? Yeah, we can go over those. Library, the first ever wine and poetry tasting night, and they did that, it was a really good function, I think what people really liked was instead of being in the community room, it was in the library, it was actually in the library space, like that was just foreign territory to be in, really good event. They also had a lunch and learn program for library, it actually had 45 people come and have lunch, and a really good program. Public Works, Main Street, Madrona Park, I'm really obsessed with Main Street today, Madrona Park, operating the walking trail, so we got that all in really good shape, and had some, I, it's just fun, I drive by, they're just amazing, seeing the news now, when people walk in on the trail, they're all going, taking good activities there. Last page, we'll keep going with public works, and we had the townlet road sidewalk installed, and it was a partnership with Polk County, they're very cooperative and very supportive on that project, actually managed that for us. And then we're, kind of another little digital area, we're trying to use electronic tablets for a lot of the functions, the daily testing data monitoring, a little bit cleaner, easier, and you have more data compilation abilities when you do that. And then the last one, one that people might not notice as much, is we have worked with the Lucky Minute Watershed Council to do a, you know, Ash Creek, what they're trying to do is work along Ash Creek, and either vegetate sections that have nothing, or if it's blackberries, try to get those out of there, and then put better vegetation in, but, so you have some grant funding with that, and then kind of cooperated with their volunteer effort. So that's the basis I want to convey there. Any questions about anything?
Yeah, questions for Scott?
On the police side, you might not know this, the 53 bike helmets, do you know how these were secured, were they donated, purchased, and if so, how?
I don't.
Okay.
Guessing it was a grant, that kind of, how they typically do the same, but.
I'll point out.
Thank you.
Yeah. There was a group that approached the Y1, I was there, that wanted independence that did the same thing, and there was another group over there, I'm looking to that, that gave away helmets.
Yeah, I think it's the same, the independence group, I think, is the same group that we worked with before, to the microe at Monmouth Independent, and, or Monmouth Elementary School, excuse me. And some of that money, I think, was actually leftover money from the Fort County cohort three project as well.
And, a couple other items to note. The, did the chamber retreat this year, that was on Saturday, so went through just really good organized process, and mostly just kind of staying where we're going, trying to get things moving forward. Other one I wanted to note was mine, I've had an interesting board meeting on a couple levels. We've, we've been, I'd say, just kind of perplexed, because month after month, we're seeing huge increases in customers, they are really doing a job, they've really got it integrated, so they're getting customers, and then our revenues are going down. You go, hmm, why would that be? And they finally drilled down a little bit, and people are buying less services. And so, basically, you get the base, which is, you know, obviously bigger at this point, that's, that's shaving down, and then so it's wiping out any gains we're getting on the sales side, and then, just an example, can your average bill used to be about $100 a month, and now it dropped to $85. So what's interesting, if you play that out, if they hadn't done the stellar job they did with new growth, it'd be looking not great at all, it'd be, it'd be really tight. The other one.
That's just what cable sales is about, you're saying cable sales is about?
Cables, really, no, 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 customer counts are going.
Just customer.
Just customer, and then it depends on which service levels they get, but it's really the cable, it's, that people just going to a lower tier, dropping it, you know, dropping HBO, whatever it may be.
And do they have an indication of whether they're dropping in favor of another service or dropping in favor of no service? For the folks, for the folks that are dropping altogether or cutting out community services?
And that's not that much of the issue, it's actually, it's really kind of lowering service, that's where the bulk is at.
Well, that's a different conversation for a different committee, but HBO is going to an à la carte model, ESPN now has an à la carte option, I could see people vetting HBO because they're going to get it some other way.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Then a different level, I think once there has been pretty exciting on the marketing front for mine, I think for the, for the first time since we've been mine it, we're really attacking all fronts on marketing. We've actually hired a firm up in Portland, it's really their job, is to interface with the world, it's usually settled on mine, and letting people know that we're down here. Mid-level, kind of calibrated the local market a little bit tighter, then the other one, they haven't done much in the past, has been social media, so now we'll be hitting all those sectors, and an interesting one that's pretty exciting that came about was Intel is going to locate a facility, kind of a cloud-based facility, down here, and is for farming. And so basically, a farmer will have sensors out in the field to view moisture content, fertilization, how things are growing cycles, that uploads to the Intel system, and the person can run analysis, and what's nice with that is, we get to power their cloud system. So then Intel will actually be a customer of mine. And so it's, things like that, if we can get the word out more that we're here, you know, we have an opportunity, and if you need some, you need some real horsepower, we're here.
Is that a significant revenue stream, or more of a public relations?
I think it's more public relations to get the word out, you know, and start small, and hopefully something could happen from there, but it's an interesting one to think about too, one, like the call center going in Independence, you know, you didn't think about, you thought that was retail, and you kind of go, well, we have little openings every now and then, like Pacific Plaza, it's like, hmm, maybe a smaller business or, you know, call center, or small tech or something could tuck themselves in one of those places, and, let alone the jobs, they use mine it, thank you very much, that'd be fun. So I think that's really neat though, they're really hitting a lot of levels here that we haven't done before.
Anything else?
Nope.
Questions for Scott before we move on? Okay, hearing none. Citizen comments, so this is the time to, for citizens to comment on something that's not on the agenda. I'm guessing, darn it, tonight, so.
I did want to mention that State of Cities is coming up, I don't even know what date exactly, I think it's the, what?
Yeah, it looked like that they changed from what I had on my calendar, but I just wanted to let everyone know.
Yeah, February 11.
February 11, I think I had it on originally, 13.
When, when do you feel a lot of, that noon at the Independence Cinema?
State of Cities at noon at the Independence Cinema. Good event to hear the mayor's talk.
Excellent, yep, it's true. Okay, business agenda, we have one item tonight, adopt the resolution to install a stop sign at Devonshire and Gwynne, and, like, the scooper is going to walk us through this one, so, thanks.
Thank you. Members of city council, what I have brought for you is a resolution to install a stop sign. In the past, city council has had similar resolutions when stop signs were required. Some of the background on this is a new subdivision in town, when new subdivisions are proposed, traffic control devices such as stop signs are identified and determined in that process. Recent residential subdivision has expanded Monmouth's transportation system, creating a T-intersection in order to improve pedestrian safety and traffic safety, a new stop sign is being recommended. Couple of the items for discussion might be that with the expansion, that this expansion is at the intersection of Gwynne Street East and Devonshire in the Edwards Edition Phase 6 subdivision. It now allows for, through traffic on Gwynne Street as well as the intersection. In the city's transportation system plan, Gwynne Street is considered a minor collector, and Devonshire is classified as a local street. With that, the implication is that Gwynne Street is both designed to handle higher traffic volumes more safely, and Devonshire is, is a smaller street designed to hold handle larger, uh, smaller traffic volumes. Currently, traffic control devices in the area is that there's a four-way stop sign one block east of this location, and then another point to note is that in the future, as Gwynne Street develops to the west towards Highway 99, additional locations for stop signs will be evaluated at that time. The proposed location that is before you was reviewed by both myself and the police chief, Talon, and we both agree that this is an appropriate location for the stop sign to encourage safety and smooth transportation network. Alternatives would be to adopt this resolution, controlling the T-intersection of Gwynne Street East and Devonshire, or cannot adopt the resolution and leave this an uncontrolled intersection. The financial implications, the developer pays for the initial installation of this stop sign, and then ongoing maintenance and replacement of the sign would be the city's responsibility. Staff recommends approval or adoption of this resolution.
One of those back, I would say alleyways, but behind the houses there?
No, it's in the back, yeah, and on the back page is a map showing the location. So it is at a T-intersection of Devonshire and Gwynne Street East, so it's right out on the, the main streets.
Is, Gwynne is going to be a major arterial if it goes through to 99, is that the?
It's, it's just classified as a, as a minor collector, so it'll bring folks from the residential areas, the local streets, onto that to get them out to either Townes Road or Highway 99.
Discussion? Hearing, no discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
Resolution, resolution.
Resolution is 1791.
I move that Monmouth City Council adopt resolution 1791 allowing for the installation and enforcement of a stop sign at the intersection of Gwynne Street East and Devonshire Lane South.
For a second.
Second.
Then moved and seconded that we approve the stop sign at the Gwynne Street and Devonshire location. Any discussion? Hearing none. Okay, roll call.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Milligan?
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer?
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie?
Aye.
Excellent, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving back to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor Protem, a couple, and we talked about possibly just staying up here because we have a short meeting, but you do have the Urban Renewal Agency meeting and a work session, we do have a guest for this.
Yes, I see that, yeah. So we might do that in that order.
Urban Renewal Agency first, and then do the work session.
Right, sounds good. So council comments, if there are any. And then, R, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting to Urban Renewal, and it will follow after that with a work session.
Excellent.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thanks, motion carries. Okay, we're adjourned, so now, let's look my book, Urban Renewal. Okay, so I would like to call the Tuesday, February 3rd, Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency to, to enter session. Phyllis, roll call.
Mr. Carey is excused. Mr. Guthrie?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Milligan?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Sobernagle?
Here.
And Mr. Oberst is excused.
Okay, any citizen comments for anything that's not on the agenda?
We need a couple minutes for this.
Oh, I missed, no, 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 you're not, okay, I'm okay, it's, yep. And then hearing none, consent calendar includes our January 20th Urban Renewal Agency meeting, and I would entertain a motion for approval there if you're so choosing to do that.
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve the consent calendar, which includes the Urban Renewal meeting minutes of January 20th. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, great. So we have a single business agenda item, it's a general assistance grant for 1140 Main Street East at the Montessori School, and, thank you, if you could lead us through a staff report, that would be great, Mark.
Okay. Members of the Urban Renewal Agency, we've got a request from Juliet Sloan, the owner of the Monmouth, Montessori School, for a general assistance grant request for $198. In July of this past year, the agency provided a general assistance grant to the Montessori School for $420 to assist with exterior improvements, including benches, supplies, and ink for the facade of the building. Now the school is about to provide new signage on the building, and the general assistance grant would pay for half of the cost of the new signage, or $396. As noted in the staff report, the property is located on Main Street East, Highway 51, and the project to improve the appearance of the building is consistent with the goal of the Urban Renewal District to promote and manage development and redevelopment of properties adjacent to Highway 51 or Highway 99 east to the S-curve at the eastern city limits. So the recommendation from staff is to approve the general assistance grant for $198. We have some sample motions for you on page two, and as I note, Juliet is here, if you have any questions at first, we've included the application. have any questions at first, we've included the application as part of the staff report, and that shows a drawing of the proposed signage. I'd be happy to answer the questions you may have.
And it appears there's two signs, right?
Yes.
And one's up front.
Yes, the Monmouth sign and the old sign.
Excellent. Discussion?
I assume we have plenty of money to cover this in Urban Renewal?
We'll be fine.
We'll be fine on this one?
Yeah.
And I think they did a fantastic job, or you did a fantastic job here first, right? Is the sign going to be on the front of the building, is that what you said?
Yeah, it's replacing where the existing sign was. I, I didn't have the heart to stick that old one back up.
Move, we pass this.
Okay, spin, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the general assistance grant for $198.
I think you do these by a roll call.
Okay, is there any more discussion first, I'll ask real quick? And if not, roll call, Phil, please.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Milligan.
Aye.
Mr. Schaefer.
Aye.
Mr. Silvernagle.
Aye. Okay, motion carries, thank you so much, everyone. Good luck with your project, Juliet.
Okay.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for adjournment now from Urban Renewal to our work session.
Will they do?
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're out of Urban Renewal, and we'll move into work session.